Welcome to the July 24, 2024, meeting of the Redmond Planning Commission. I think we have an echo. Can everyone just check their microphones briefly on their computers? Speakers? Okay, thank you. I think we're good. Welcome to the July 24, 2024, meeting of the Redmond Planning Commission. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll start with a roll call. Commissioner Parna?
Present.
Commissioner Coleman?
Present.
Commissioner Copely?
Present.
Commissioner Gagne?
Present.
Commissioner Van Nyman?
Present.
Vice Chair Woodier?
Present.
And I am Chair Weston. I'd like to thank the following staff for being present tonight. Ian Lefkort, Glenn Coyle, Todd Rawling, Becky Frye, Kim Dietz, Ann Edelbach, Jeff Thompson, Peter Holt, Chris Wyatt, and I hope I'm not missing anyone. Thank you all for being here. I look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's approved. And next, I look for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from July 26. Sorry, June 26.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, now it's time to hear public comment and items from the audience. This is for topics that aren't addressed for our public hearing later tonight.
We have one person to sign up, and first is David M.
Wonderful, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm David Morton, Redmond 98053. Specific land uses and activities are prohibited in Redmond's critical aquifer recharge area, or CARA 1, to protect the shallow, unconfined aquifer which provides 40% of the city's drinking water. The prohibitions are aimed at preventing contamination of the aquifer by various potential pollutants. Here's why some activities are banned. First, solid waste transfer stations. Handling large volumes of waste can lead to leachate containing heavy metals, organic compounds, and pathogens which can infiltrate and contaminate the groundwater. Second, metal recycling facilities with outdoor storage. Outdoor metal storage and handling can result in heavy metals and other pollutants being washed into the soil and groundwater by rain. Third, chemical manufacturing. This involves hazardous substances used in making plastics, resins, pharmaceuticals, and agricultural chemicals. Spills or leaks during production can contaminate the groundwater. Fourth, manufacture of metals from molten materials. The process generates waste and emissions, including heavy metals and toxic compounds which can leach into the soil and groundwater. Fifth, vehicle towing yards on permeable surfaces. Stored vehicles can leak fluids like oil, gasoline, and antifreeze which can penetrate permeable surfaces and contaminate the aquifer. Sixth, hazardous waste treatment, storage, and disposal facilities. These facilities handle toxic substances that pose a significant risk of groundwater contamination through accidental spills, leaks, or improper disposal. Seventh, sand, gravel, and hard rock mining. Mining disturbs large land areas, potentially introducing contaminants and increasing sedimentation affecting groundwater quality. Eighth, mining below the groundwater surface. This directly disturbs the aquifer, increasing contamination risks from introduced materials or changes in groundwater flow. Ninth, dry cleaning using perchloroethylene. Perchloroethylene is highly toxic and carcinogenic. Even small spills can significantly contaminate groundwater. And tenth, golf courses. They require extensive use of fertilizers, pesticides, and herbicides. These chemicals can run off into groundwater and contaminate the aquifer with nitrates, phosphates, and other harmful substances. These prohibitions aim to safeguard the aquifer by preventing activities that could introduce harmful contaminants into the water supply. The aquifer's shallow, unconfined nature makes it especially vulnerable to pollution, necessitating stringent land use controls to ensure the safety and quality of Redmond's drinking water. Thanks.
We are going to move on to conclude our work on the Water System Plan and the General Wastewater Plan for redmond 2050. Bring up Ann Edelbach and Jeff Thompson.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jeff Thompson, one of the water wastewater engineers, and Ann Edelbach is here with me. She's a senior planner in our utilities group. Lisa and Peter are on vacation, so we're filling in for them. So, in your package, you will find a report reflecting Planning Commission's discussion as well as your recommendations on the Water System Plan, General Wastewater Plan, and language to be added to the Redmond Zoning Code 21.17.110. We are here to represent the report.
Lovely, thank you. So at this point, I look for a motion to approve the Planning Commission recommendation and report for City Council on the Water System Plan and General Wastewater Plan for redmond 2050.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? The one thing I want to note is I know that some Commissioners have provided letters, thank you, representing their opinions that need to be specifically called out to City Council, so thank you for getting that in. If anyone else is wanting to write one, if you could finish up probably this week, that would be good, and that way I can just go right with everything else and council can get it at the same time. Are there any questions on that? Commissioner Coleman?
Yeah, I'm not writing one, so that's fine.
No? Okay, sounds good. All right. So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, so thank you, that's approved. Thank you for being here. All right, next up, we are going to have a briefing on an addendum to the Redmond Zoning Code rewrite Phase III, which was the legislative amendments, which we previously concluded on June 26. I do want to note that the agenda says briefing. We're going to do a full study session on this because we're on a slightly compressed timeframe with a public hearing next week, so we do want to start an issues matrix this week. But in the meantime, I'm going to turn it over to Kim Dietz.
Good evening, I'm Kimberly Dietz with Economic Development, part of the Planning Department, and I'm here with my team members, David Lee, Tim McCart, and Todd Rawlings. They are online and will be part of this evening's presentation. I'm going to share my screen first before we start. There we go. So tonight, what staff is proposing is an addendum to your previous recommendation regarding legislative amendments to the city's development regulations, and these amendments are addressing Senate Bill 5290 and House Bill 1293 for permit and design review streamlining. There we go. So tonight, as Madam Chair mentioned, is a project briefing, and we'd also like to hear your questions so that we can prepare an issues matrix in order to bring back to your next meeting, which is next Wednesday. This will also be part of the Type 6 formal review process, meaning that you will review and ultimately make a recommendation. That recommendation then goes to the City Council, who holds a study session, and they also will take action, our goal, so that the city is compliant with the state legislation. And this is the same discussion as your base package that you reviewed, is for the amendments to be adopted before January 1 of 2025. And just as a reminder, the package in its entirety started being formed in January, and you reviewed, I think you made your recommendation only a month or two ago, wasn't that long ago, but in the process of preparing the material for the City Council, we worked with our colleagues, and there was a little bit of, you know, we thought the amendments were somewhere. Well, it ended up that they were actually nowhere. So, my colleague Becky Frye and I, we met with our director to present a variety of ways that this information could come forward, but because it had the most relevance to the package that the Commission had already made a recommendation on, what we landed on was requesting an addendum. So thus far, what staff has done is we've requested an addendum to the technical committee's recommendation, and in your packet for tonight, you'll see how we did that. We called out the way that this addendum would be addressed in the different ways in the package of amendments, and then we specifically asked for an additional recommendation as well as signature from the technical committee, specific only to the addendum. And we proposed to do the same for the Planning Commission, whereby your recommendation on the base package would stand as it is, and then we would mark that an addendum has also been reviewed with your recommendations then, available for the City Council. And if it is possible, what we would like to do is to sequence this back into the City Council's review such that they can see this as part of their September study session. That would allow them to hold the study session, discuss the substance of both the base package and the addendum, and then make their recommendation in October for the final action. So just as a reminder, your base package involved 5290 and 1293 legislation regarding permit and design review streamlining, and it involves ways that the city will improve its procedures as well as its regulations in order to meet the base requirements of these two bills. And then we are also anticipating that additional amendments will be proposed at a later date, though that is yet to be determined when. There was work underway to address some of the other parts of the bill, those that weren't required by January 1 of the coming year. Okay? I'd like to now turn to my colleagues. One of the things we'd like to do before we begin to jump into the addendum is to describe the different permit types, because the addendum refers to Type 1, Type 2, and so forth. So we just wanted to take a moment to describe those to you. So Tim McCart is online, and he'll take over for a minute.
All right, good evening, Planning Commission. Tim McCart, principal planner. Can everyone hear me okay?
Tim, I'm sorry, we're having a little bit of a hard time hearing you. I don't know if that's...
I will speak louder then.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
So, yeah, sorry, this microphone is a little finicky. So if anyone is having problems, please just interrupt me. So, a quick overview, I'm going to date myself by sharing this information. So when the Growth Management Act was first went into effect in 1993, it was twinned with a package of legislative amendments that were generally called regulatory reform. And so since 1993, Washington State cities and counties planning under the Act have basically set up a system whereby there are various types or tiers of permits, and so permits are grouped into generally five or six different categories. This table is actually in the code, in the Permit Types and Procedures section of 2176, and it basically goes from on your left-hand side, the Type 1 administrative permits, through Type 2s, 3, 4, 5, and up to 6. And the concept here and the organization of the table and the permit types is that the Type 1 administrative permits are essentially more ministerial. There is very little, if any discretion, afforded to the decision-maker on a Type 1 permit. So those are kind of your basic permits, building permits, mechanical permits, clear and grade permits, low-level land use applications such as boundary line adjustments. And so those decisions are made by our department, the Planning Department, under the authority granted to us by our director. So these are staff-level approvals, fairly straightforward, no public notice, generally no, they are not issues that generally involve, you know, adjacent property owners or whatnot. It's strictly complying with the zoning code. Type 2 permits are a little bit more involved, there is some discretion there. Those decisions in the city of Redmond are made by what we call our technical committee, which is comprised of Community Development Director and the Public Works Director. There is a little bit more discretion here. There's flexibility that's afforded in certain sections of the code that can be used to review projects. There's things like bonuses that have to be calculated, perhaps administrative design flexibility, things of that nature. So in accordance with that, there's a higher level of interest and perhaps scrutiny by neighbors or affected property owners or persons by these projects, and so these are noticed. There's public notice with these Type 2 permits, and we write a more involved analysis, staff report, present that to the technical committee, the technical committee makes the decision. Then there's Type 3. These are permits such as variances, preliminary plats, reasonable use exceptions, and these generally involve more public interest, a higher level of engagement by the public, so these are noticed, just like the Type 2 permits are, and staff reviews them and presents them to the technical committee. The technical committee in this situation does not make a recommendation, actually, they do make a recommendation, they don't make a decision, they make a recommendation to the hearing examiner. And the hearing examiner holds a public hearing and makes the decision. That public hearing is noticed, so that affected parties, parties of interest, adjacent property owners, have the opportunity to participate in the public hearing process. Type 4 quasi-judicial, again, these are more higher-profile, more involved types of applications, and so, again, it goes through the staff level where we process, there's a notice of application, there is a public hearing that is made. In this case, the technical committee, again, would make a recommendation to the hearing examiner. The hearing examiner would hold the public hearing, and instead of making a decision, the hearing examiner would make a recommendation to City Council, who would then ultimately be the decision-maker. Type 5 quasi-judicial, again, these are bigger, more discretionary permits, higher-profile, larger-scale, so these are typically your master plan developments with development agreements. So there's a lot of moving parts and pieces, the city has broader discretion in making these decisions, there may be a lot more public interest. So with these quasi-judicial permits, there's notice of application, there's a neighborhood meeting, there is a public hearing. For the process here, staff does the review, makes its recommendation to the technical committee, and then the technical committee advances its recommendation to the City Council. City Council holds a public hearing and then makes a decision. And so those are really the, those five types are what we call quasi-judicial proceedings. So there are, there's decisions being made, someone is acting in a judge-like role to make that decision. That can be for Type 1, the staff, it can be up to City Council for Type 5. Type 6 permits are, and reviews are purely legislative, and these are going to be the ones that are most familiar to the Planning Commission. So these are basically modifications, amendments, policy-type of decisions on comprehensive plans, sub-area plans, systems plans, and zoning code amendments. So in this case, as you're familiar, we will notice a public hearing. You, the Planning Commission, holds a public hearing, you make the recommendation to City Council, and then City Council, in a closed-record hearing, makes the decision on that particular package, whether it be the comp plan, whether it be an amendment to the comp plan, whether it be zoning code amendments, such as those that are being presented tonight. There's a variety of different appeal procedures, I don't want to belabor that, it's not necessarily germane to this, but basically, the hearing examiner can, serves as an appellate body for Type 1 and Type 2, so those are essentially held by the hearing examiner, and then if the appellant wants to continue through the appeal process, they need to go and file a LUPA appeal, which is then heard by Superior Court. And for Type 3 through Type 5, those are, require LUPA appeals straight to the Superior Court. And so those are largely governed by state law, how the appeal process works under LUPA land use. So yeah, that's that, and I guess I'll turn it back to Kim here, or am I going to keep on going? I'm going to keep on going.
Thank you, Tim, yes, if you don't mind, that would be great.
So vesting, let's first maybe talk about what vesting means in the context of land use. Vesting is a concept whereby an applicant for a certain type of permit, in this case, typically a land use permit, but it can also, it affects any other type of permit, a clear and grade permit, a building permit. It deals with when the, some action by the applicant or by the government, the decision-making body, the local government, when it vests or attaches to certain regulations that are in place based upon that act or timing. So, for example, in Washington State, there's statutory vesting that's defined in the RCWs and the WACS. That only happens one of three ways. So it happens by a submission of a complete building permit application, by filing a complete preliminary plat or short plat application, or through a development agreement. So let's take the easiest example, which is a complete building permit application. So when I, an applicant, submits a complete building permit application, and that is determined complete by the city of Redmond, that locks in all of the codes in effect at the time that the permit was determined complete, including land use and building,
Tim, are you still there?
Yes, I am, sorry. Had a little bubble there. So those regulations get locked in at that time, and the applicant has certainty, the local government has certainty in terms of how that, the regulations under which that permit will be reviewed. For a subdivision application, preliminary plat or short plat, it's different. When I submit that complete application for that preliminary plat or short plat, I, as the applicant, vest to the codes in effect at the time of the subdivision application. Development agreements are a little more complicated, those can, they have more flexibility to determine vesting and extend vesting and things like that, because they're essentially contracts. So that's how statutory vesting works, and cities or counties planning under GMA have the ability to find their own vesting regimes. Redmond has not really done that in the past, and so there have been questions about how vesting works, and so this really, this amendment is intended to provide more clarity and certainty to applicants and to the city in terms of when vesting will occur. So for Type 1, 2, and 3 permits that we talked about, so those are, those are kind of ministerial permits, administrative permits decided by the technical committee, and then permits that are decided by the hearing examiner, they, the regulations in place, effective on, as of the date that the application is approved, will be those that vest, that the application vests to. So what the heck does that mean? What it means is that I can submit an application to the city of Redmond, and I can go through the process, and any regulations that may change during the review process, my permit application will have to comply with those regulations. However, once the permit is issued, the regulations in effect on that date are what I can rely on and what my project will be reviewed under for the period of approval. And, you know, there's various permit approval periods, generally it's two years. So I will have certainty as an applicant, say for example, I submit a site plan entitlement application to build a mixed-use building, I get that approved on January 24, 2024. I, as the applicant, have certainty that I can carry forward with that project, and no changes to, the land use regulations are going to affect my permit from that date forward. So my engineering review and my building permit, if submitted within, by the, prior to the expiration date of that permit, it's going to be reviewed under those land use controls in effect as of the approval date. So that's an important thing for applicants, to give them certainty that they can continue to invest in their project and build their project, being subject to a certain set of regulations without being subjected to change. So that's Type 1 and 2 and 3 permits. Type 4 and 5 permits, so those are decided by City Council, there's more discretion for Type 5 permits, there's a development agreement, and so in terms of when vesting attaches, that's going to be determined by the actual action. So part of the decision made by City Council for Type 4 and 5 permits will be actually what vests and for how long that's going to be. For building permits, our clarification is we are, we're allowing for extensions and greater coordination with land use permits, short plats, and final and binding site plans, you're going to vest in effect into the, to the regulations at the time of your application. The expiration will be two years, and what you need to do prior to that two years is record your final documents, so either your short plat or your binding site plan. So that's clarified for those applications. And finally, extensions. We want to clean up extensions. We want to provide for a single one-year extension that is allowable, provided you meet certain criteria. We have, and currently, the code allows for multiple extensions without really any specifically-defined criteria. We want to tighten that up, we want to allow for extensions, but we also want to recognize that Redmond is a city that is actively working on its development codes and will continue to do so, and so it's important to require that applications not get extended multiple times for multiple years and be permitted to be built under previous land use regulations. So we want to try to hasten that process a little bit, and so that's the reason for the changes to the extension process. Next slide. Administrative modifications. This is a bit of a unique unicorn to the city of Redmond, at least in my experience. An administrative modification happens after a permit is approved. So let's say I come in and I get my site plan entitlement for my mixed-use building, and then, you know, I get, I start designing it, or, you know, there's a change in economic conditions and I want to change what was approved. Every zoning code has a provision to allow that, but it's very unique to each jurisdiction. We call it an administrative modification in the city of Redmond, and we do a lot of these. Basically, any change after a project is permitted and/or constructed requires an administrative modification, even for very, very small, very, very small changes to the site or to the building, they are required to submit a Type 2 permit that goes, that is reviewed and goes to the technical committee, and the technical committee issues a decision on that. We believe that we need to streamline that process and make it easier for people to get through the administrative modification process with less time consumed, less money consumed, less staff resources consumed. And so we're trying to essentially create a more seamless and easier process to change either... either approved or constructed sites. So what we're doing is we're, instead of, we're defining really two types of administrative modifications. One is, is one that essentially complies with all of the code requirements, right? So I want to, a recent administrative modification, as silly as it sounds, was for a retail store to change some parking around on their site to allow for kind of pickup spots in front of the store. And so unfortunately, the way our code is currently structured, they had to go through an administrative modification, even though it was continuing to meet, the proposed change met all of our requirements, it met the parking requirements, there was no change to circulation, there was no loss of landscaping, nothing had to be moved around the site. And so there's really no value added to that process in requiring something like that that can fully complies with the code standards to go through a type two process. It should be ministerial and simple, they submit a plan, we review it, we confirm that it meets the zoning code requirements, and they're done, their permit is approved. It's, you know, much more, much more efficient that way. There is then a different tier of administrative modification where, you know, maybe you're doing a small addition, you know, or you're changing a land use perhaps, or something of that nature. We're still going to use a type one process for that, and everything is basically going to comply with the codes. So if you can comply with the code, even though you're doing a small building addition, which is defined as six, up to 6,000 square feet, or 10% of your gross floor area, whichever is less, so you're doing a small addition, it complies with all the codes, floor area ratios, setbacks, landscaping, so forth and so on, you can just do that through a type one permit and go ahead and be on your way. So anything greater than that, that adds to the building more than 10% or 6,000 square feet, that's going to push you into a type two permit, because that's a bigger change to the site that requires a more detailed review and a higher level of scrutiny and, you know, public notification. So that's a summary of what we're proposing to do for administrative modifications to make that a more workable process.
Yes. Thank you, Tim. I have just a little bit more, I think I have maybe, well, one more slide.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so process wise, what staff is requesting is that the planning commission hold a public hearing during its next meeting, so next Wednesday, which would be the 31st, to also use that time for extra study session and make its recommendation all in that one meeting. We recognize that you will have a break during August, I believe, and so what this request is, is to allow us, like I mentioned earlier, to then sync back up with the city council's package, and they are aware that you are meeting on this item. So we did let them know that we needed to just return to you for these two requests that we have.
And just to clarify that schedule, so report approval would be when we come back in September?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, could you-
Is report approval, if we, so if we sign off on our recommendation next week, would report approval be in September, or is that-
I was thinking about that, and one option is that the commission can decide that you would do that remotely. Another is that staff could come back, but let the, that the city council know that your report is still outstanding. They will meet on September 13, I believe, which would be in advance of your first September meeting. So I believe that we can do it either, either of those ways.
Perfect. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, so I think we're going to put together an issues matrix if anyone has anything to add. Fantastic. Commissioner Aparna.
Thank you, Tim, and thank you, Kim, for that, because I came in not understanding any of this. So I really appreciated the walkthrough and understanding what it meant in terms of vesting and the types of permits. So I really, really appreciate it. So for, our specific question is, I know we're trying to do this for compliance for to state law, so is there a timeframe metric that we're shooting for, for specific approval of type one and type two permits? Like, or is there a recommendation from state law, or are we trying to self-impose some kind of efficiency metric?
It is a requirement in 5290, there are three, three date requirements. And I believe, I know that the type one fits into the 90-day, Tim, I think some of type two fits also into the 90-day, then we have a 120-day and a 170-day. I believe those are the timeframes.
So-
Great.
So the wait-
Actually, I'm just going to jump in here. So we are already about five minutes over on this item, so I think we're just going to gather things in a matrix now, and then it can be in our packet for next week, but probably not to question, like, full answers in this meeting. If you have additional questions on that, though, please include now.
Yeah, one additional question, I think there were some public comments about vesting in the Overlake, does that, is that over, is it overriding some of the vesting schedules in Overlake, or is this going to be for the whole city?
Sure, yes, go ahead. Yeah, so this is specific to the entire city. If a neighborhood such as Overlake, which is the case here, has its own vesting provisions, then that would apply on top of these, like, these are the base.
Thank you. Becky, would you like to chime in here with an additional piece?
Yeah, just to clarify too, that the, the comment was specifically to 2112505, because it's a provision, or comment on the edit that was made in the omnibus package for just Overlake. But the provisions in 2112505, we'll talk about a little bit more, but those are intended to add additional flexibility on top of the city's standard. So she's addressing all of the city's standard, our 505 section is intended to add some additional flexibility.
Got it. One last question.
Let's go around, and then we can come back. So I have one to add, there was a public comment that came in today from Katie Kendall with concerns that type five buildings are no longer called, sorry, type five permits are no longer called out appropriately for vesting, and concern about what that would do to permits that expire this January. So I, I would love more information, just in response to her comment in particular.
Yeah, and just to clarify, that was the exact same comment that Aparna just was mentioning. It is specific to the omnibus package, so we can refer to it with the discussion under the public hearing tonight.
Great. I just, because we're in such a compressed timeframe, I just want to get it into the issues matrix now.
Yes, but it's not on her code, it's a completely different section of chapter, it's in the omnibus package, not in her package.
Fascinating. Okay, thank you. Yeah, it seemed like it was related to this, actually, but great. Commissioner Aparna, you have another item.
Yeah, I just had a question, so nothing changes in the type six permit, right? I mean, the permit process, no, because I, I was thinking the type six is a docket kind of deal, right? So would that mean that that's not part, we are not bound by state law for the docket questions, or we don't have to change anything there?
5290, 1293 specifically called out those processes to update policies and regulations as not being part of that streamlining. They realize it takes much more time.
Yeah. Thanks.
Other commissioners with ideas? Commissioner Coleman.
I have a question, I'm not sure it's on the matrix, but what's the sort of volume of the impact of it, like, what's the volume that this is going to impact in terms of changes? I was thinking about what you were talking about in terms of type ones, type three, and the volume of changes that will be affected by that. In the current level, like, the X number of permits, how many of them actually in the past would this have affected, so what's it going to do in the future?
Could we bring that back on the issues matrix, because I want to make sure that we're pulling in the correct data.
Yes, this is all for the issues matrix right now.
Thank you.
Any other items, commissioners? Commissioner Gagne.
I had a question about-
Ah, thank you.
At the end of, at the end of Tim's presentation, he talked about, gave an example of the local business that was wanting to make some changes with the parking and the curb side, and you talked about, and I loved the idea of it becoming more, if it's an issue where there's, everything is clearly in compliance, taking it from number two, type two, to type one. What my question is, is that a move that is to become in compliance with the legislative changes, or is that by request of the city or based on feedback from local business owners, or why is that, what's the drive there?
We, like I said, you know, my, it's, this is kind of my, my issue. We spend a lot of staff time and applicants spend a lot of money on these administrative modifications, and in my opinion, they, the review process adds no value to those projects. And so if it meets the code, go, go ahead, get busy, you know, and, you know, it just doesn't need a level of review, the use is established, the site is developed, they just want to modify their site, and so it, it's really just a matter of a lot of busy work for everyone, that doesn't really create any value in the, in the, in the outcome in terms of the built environment. So it should be, in my experience, all of these are ministerial. This is the only city that I've worked for where, even if something complies with the code, you have to take it through this type two process.
Thank you, Kim.
Yes, and in addition, what Tim described is, by reducing the process, it does result in a freeing up of staff's time to address some of the other more complicated procedures. And in being that, all of the timeframes have been reduced and they're very, very restricted, we have to try to streamline where we can, and this is just one of those, one of those examples.
Commissioner Coleman.
I have one other question. With, with the codes that are going to be more automated at this point, like, some of the, I think the admin changes, will you automate those in a way that the staff don't have to get involved? I was a bit confused as to how the process, because if you tick all the boxes, do you need staff to be involved, or is there some system that's going to make, basically let those go through without anybody having to touch them?
I think this is one we could also bring back in the issues matrix to give a little bit of breakdown of the procedure.
Right. Anything else for the issues matrix? No? Okay, so we'll see you next week.
There you go. Thank you.
All right, so next up, we have our public hearing on the summer 2024 omnibus and wrap-up package for Redmond 2050. And I believe we have Becky Frye and Ian Lovecourt, and possibly others.
We've got others that are online, that's Glenn Coyle and Odrokar Dennis. Did I do that backwards?
So good evening, commissioners. So the public hearing for this evening on the omnibus package we have before you includes the comprehensive plan in its entirety, with a few additional changes. The code package, again, not necessarily in its entirety, but we put in the code package everything that has changed from the previous version and some additional context information. But if there wasn't a change, or if it wasn't needed for context, it wasn't in the omnibus package, because it's already 1,000 pages. So what we're going to be doing after we move forward is, for council, is we'll have the one big package, trying to keep the confusion as small as we can. But those pieces are moving forward. In the staff analysis, we did walk through all of the changes from prior. It also includes a number of other pieces and parts, just zoning code map updates and those types of things. In the staff memo for this evening, it does walk through four changes that are in addition to what was initially published for the public hearing, and I do want to mention those really quickly, and we can walk through them more during the discussion. But the first one is council member Stewart had asked us to add additional bullet to PI2 about volunteerism, and that is in the memo. The Department of Commerce issued some updated guidance on emergency housing capacity analysis, and so we've had to add some additional information to the technical appendix to the housing element, and Ian Lovecourt can walk through that a little bit later as well. But the entirety of that amendment is actually in your memo, so you can see what the analysis showed. The third one is a tiny edit that was called out here at the planning commission on our last meeting on July 10, and it was an edit to can we change retail to commercial? Just to make it more clear, we talked to Philly Marsh, and they agreed that that actually makes it more clear, that it is not intended just for retail use, so that is a proposed change from the initial publication for the, tonight. And then the fourth, the, we have a minor revision to the base FAR for the neighborhood multifamily zone, and I'll talk about that a little bit more. But as Arch was going through and doing the analysis, we tailored that zone to one FAR, and everything works at a one FAR, but a 1.1 would give it just a little bit of a bigger margin, and it's more in line with their comfort zone. So again, Ian Lovecourt can walk through that if you have any questions during the public hearing. But I did want to call out that those are four changes from what was initially published for the public hearing in your issues matrix, you have called out for a few other changes, so we can walk through all of that. But if you would like to open the public hearing and get comments, then we can go through the issues matrix after public comment.
Yep, that sounds like the way to do it. All right, so at this point, I would like to open the public hearing on the summer 2024 omnibus and wrap-up package for Redmond 2050.
We have two community members who wish to provide public comment, one is in person, one is on phone, and so first up is David M.
Good evening, commissioners, I'm David Morton, Redmond 98053. The non-residential use table 2104200, found in the zoning code amendments package, shows uses that are permitted and not permitted by zone. Certain land uses and activities are prohibited in the critical aquifer recharge areas, or CARAs, and special restrictions apply to some uses and activities within shoreline environments. Developers and permit review staff should know whether a proposed development project is within a CARA or a shoreline environment, and is therefore subject to the restrictions and requirements within those areas. Currently, Redmond's website regarding commercial building permits asks only, are you building near the shoreline, and does not ask, are you building within a CARA? Table 2104200 does not adequately address the prohibited uses in the CARAs and near shorelines, and the reference to the CARA and shoreline regulations is brief and nearly inconspicuous. Some uses that are currently listed in table 2104200 are not permitted in CARA1. These uses include, first, solid waste transfer and recycling. Solid waste transfer stations are prohibited in CARA1. Metal recycling facilities without outdoor storage and handling activities are prohibited in CARA1. Second, manufacturing and wholesale trade. Chemical manufacturing, including manufacturing plastics and resins, pharmaceuticals, cleaning compounds, paints and lacquers, and agricultural chemicals, is prohibited in CARA1. Manufacturer of metals from molten materials is prohibited in CARA1. Third, towing operators and auto impoundment yards. Vehicle towing yards that store vehicles on permeable surfaces are prohibited in CARA1. Fourth, hazardous waste treatment and storage. Hazardous waste treatment, storage, and disposal facilities are prohibited in CARA1. Fifth, mining and extraction establishment. Sand, gravel, and hard rock mining, and mining of any type below the upper surface of the saturated groundwater are prohibited in CARA1. Sixth, the business and service. Dry cleaning establishments using the solvent perchloroethylene are prohibited in CARA1. And seventh, golf course. Golf courses are prohibited in CARA1. Would it be possible for the zoning code to be more clear about these land uses and activities that are listed in table 2104200 and are prohibited in Redmond's CARA1 by the CARA regulations? Thank you.
Next, we have Abigail D., and I will call them now. Next, we have Abigail D., and I will call them now.
Hi, this is Abby.
Hi, this is Chair Weston with the Redmond Planning Commission at the public hearing.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. I'd be happy to make some public comment right now.
That would be lovely. If you could start with your name and address.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Abby Dewis and I'm at 999 Third Avenue, Seattle, Washington, 98101. And I'm a local land use attorney at the Hillis Clark Firm. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of NAOP Washington State. We've submitted a comment letter to you earlier today regarding the proposed changes to the transition to new standards provisions in the omnibus at RVC 2112 505. And to cut to the chase, we oppose the changes and ask that you don't support them. The transition to new standards provision was carefully crafted to allow existing Overlake projects and new projects getting going this year to continue under existing codes without the need for a redesign. The code language was already reviewed by the Planning Commission and endorsed unanimously earlier this year. The code provision supports the common sense notion that projects should be allowed to move forward in entitlements while the city is still working on new codes, and it recognizes the significant investments developers and property owners make in seeking entitlements. As Tim noted earlier, with respect to the vesting conversation, certainty in what codes will apply is really important for developers to be able to invest in permits. Although the proposed changes seem minor, they have far-reaching impacts. Because any large project in Overlake requires a type five master plan development and a development agreement, in addition to site plan entitlements, which include design review, the proposed changes remove, to remove type five references have the effect of precluding any large projects from using the provision. We're aware of at least two projects in the pipeline who are seeking to use this provision, potentially representing hundreds of housing units, who will not be able to use it should the changes move forward, which jeopardizes whether those projects can move forward at all. We do not think this is the right result for the city. At the time, permit volumes and project starts are significantly down, and the result will be that the city loses out on these units in the near term. The added restriction on the development agreement language in subsection B also caught my eye as a land use attorney. I think it's a little bit odd, as one of the hallmarks of a development agreement in state law, is that they include information on project vesting. The proposed subsection B therefore restricts the city council's ability to negotiate with applicants and ultimately decide what is the best option for the city with respect to a particular project. So it just strikes us as a little bit of an odd restriction that probably is unnecessary because the city council should have discretion to tailor development agreements however they think is best. For that reason, we would recommend against that language as well. Thank you for your work on this and for your hard work on behalf of the City of Redmond. I'm always continually impressed about the dedication of planning commission members like yourselves. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So I think that was everything and we had, it sounds like the written comment that we received from Katie Kendall was applying to this as well. Okay. Great. So with that, I'm going to close the verbal portion of the hearing. Written will stay open for the moment. I think what we should do is work through our existing issues matrix. And then if there are any last bits and pieces, then we can talk through that.
And just for the record, I do want to add that several letters did come in via email today. All of them were forwarded to the Planning Commission. That includes a comment from the Lake Washington School District, a comment from David Morton, Abby Dewis and Katie Kendall. So for the record, I just want to read those in. So we're not reading the letters, but they have been forwarded to the commissioners.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So here's the current version of your issues matrix. I do want to thank Commissioner Parana for sending an email saying certain of hers can be closed. And before the meeting this evening, she added a few more that she could close. So those have been marked here. Also for those who pulled down the packet information on Friday when it was initially published, there were two items that had not yet had a staff comment on it. Those have been updated. The website was updated this morning with those additional comments. So all issues matrix items that are current on there right now do have a staff response. So if we can start with the first one, the smart city edition that was added by the city council. Do we feel comfortable closing this item?
So this is Commissioners Van Nyman and Stewart, or sorry, Van Nyman and Copely.
So I'm, I'm comfortable closing mine. I, I wasn't, part of it was the ambiguity over the, over the terminology of service provider, but it also just, that particular phrasing struck me as odd, the way it was written, like encourage other service providers to do the same. Like it, I don't know, partner with our service providers to what end? Like, I don't know. It just, it seemed odd. Like, of, of course PSC is moving forward toward trying to incorporate smart technologies into their system. And so whether we encourage them or not seems beside the point. But I guess that was the city council language. I, I would just prefer more language about partnering with companies that provide those services or something, like a little bit more active language instead of just encouraging them, that seems.
Okay. If you'd like to keep it open for that comment, staff can come back at our meeting next week with a proposed edit. Could I?
Sure. And I won't be here next week, but I can read it in advance if you have some language around that. And also, could, so could we add the page number? I guess I could just look through it and look for smart city, but it would be nice to have that, the page number there.
Okay.
Because it's a big document.
It's a really big document, but what we can do is when we posted the packet, I also pulled out each individual chapter. And on the Redmond 2050 website, you can just look at a specific chapter. So in the issues matrix follow-up, what I can do is link to that chapter and then show the page for context. And then we can show the actual policy language in your issues matrix with the change. So you'll see it fully in the issues matrix too. You wouldn't necessarily have to go back and forth. So. Page 184. Thank you. Commissioner Parana.
And then Becky, on the data privacy side of things, it sounds like that's beyond the scope of what we're referring to when we're talking about smart cities. It doesn't sound like there's going to be data collection involved in any kind of smart city initiatives. So I'm very comfortable with closing out my comment there.
Okay. Thank you. Everything closed except for the super, service provider related edit?
Right. I think so. For issue one.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you. We'll keep that one open with a minor edit proposal. Okay. Chair Weston, do you feel comfortable closing item number two?
Yes. So this one really jumped out of me because of the table, so I appreciate that the table was corrected. And it still seems like a very small area to be, I understand the explanation in here, but we have a lot of places in Redmond that have similar slopes and green open space. So like in the future, maybe we could look at it, but I don't think it needs to hold up the omnibus package.
Okay. Yeah. Just for clarity, anything that was in a zone that we were not intending to change, we just weren't going to mess around with all those boundaries unless it like was in conflict with something else we were trying to do.
And yeah, and I think the big thing that really jumps out at me on this is this should have probably come up during the land use discussion, but it was such a tiny parcel. It's half of a parcel and it was light yellow on medium yellow in the maps that we reviewed. So it actually wasn't visible until we got the, this round of maps and the table. So maybe just in the future, recognizing that like that contrast, the way it's currently surrounded with a dash line actually makes it jump out in a way that's more glaring. So I do appreciate the current maps. But we can close. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Copely.
First of all, the data is fantastic. Thank you for sharing it. I had no idea that there was a 2019 micro mobility program that was implemented and the data supports that people like it and are using it. And it's encouraging to see that they're taking longer trips with it. So I thought this was really great and I appreciated this. I don't know that we necessarily addressed the last portion, which is a specific target percentage, if that could be addressed.
Yeah. The, the transportation folks let us know that the very last sentence in here in the response is that transit system plan that's going to be edited and updated will actually be the one to develop the specifics and will adopt a specific target in that particular plan, not in this one.
Correct. Commissioner Coleman.
Yeah, I'd actually raise this topic, I think, first, which is great. I wish that Copely's also, was also really interested in it because I'd sent an email asking about this particularly. The target percentage is good to hear that. The other thing that has sort of struck me in, in reflection on this is a couple of things. One is we talk about first and last mile, but actually that seems the wrong way of looking at it. To me, it's like, what is the way to actually get everybody in the Redmond area to be able to get to light rail in a fast fashion? Right? So it's not like 51% or 60%, it's like 100%. Like anybody in Redmond, how can they actually get to the city center to use light rail? That's the first thing. Particularly with population growth, like some of these targets need to reflect that too. So I would assume that would come into, into some of the analysis. And the second, probably the second thing is, we're a city now, not a suburb. So a city, you know, I think about, I'm not expecting us to be, be London or Tokyo or, you know, New York. But I would think there would be more of a vision here in enabling with, with new technology and new approaches to be able to get people to light rail, particularly because that's what a lot of the intent is, to be downtown. That's what the, the focus is, in a different way. So I just, and maybe this is coming in the next version, but I've just got some questions around, doesn't seem to be any kind of, I'm not even thinking blue sky. Like, there should be some more thinking. It's not, it's not as advanced, advanced to me as I'd expect.
Yeah. And that's a good point. And just as a reminder, there's a lot of moving parts and plans that are related to transportation. The comprehensive plan is intended to be this super high level, not any specific targets. And that's why you see the language seems a little fuzzy. The actual specifics that you're looking for and all of that additional stuff is a part of the transportation master plan update. And we have actually already on preliminary scheduled an update from them a little bit later this year. And they're still working on that. So that is a great place and a great team to have those conversations with because that level of specificity is appropriate for that transportation master plan update.
Thank you. Yeah, we can pause and wait till that. Thank you very much, Becky.
And Commissioner Copely, you're ready to close?
Yeah. Yes.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Parana, let me know that four and five can be closed.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. And we had responded to the additional clarification on the prefab. Chair Weston, did you have?
The second, if you keep scrolling down, there was a second comment, which is the one that I really was getting at, which is that I really would hope that those types do have a path forward and aren't just blocked. And so I just wanted the confirmation that there is openness to those solutions because I really do think there's solutions.
Yeah. And I spoke to our building official and he did confirm that the, there's two paths forward. And so we've explained that in here too. If, his direction to me was they're there today and so they have to find some way to be permitted. And so it's just, it's either goes in a normal path, but if it has to deviate, then it just deviates through the self-certification process for the engineer designer. So, great. Commissioner Parana.
I actually had a follow-up on this. I was just curious if something like this could be added to the upcoming design standards as a small section saying, I, I was just spitballing here, but it, certain basic types are acceptable given, you know, fire rating X or something like that, right?
Right.
With conditions. That would give people ideas on how to approach this?
Right. Because I just, the goals of the sustainable housing and then also, and the resilient housing and then also affordable housing.
There will be thresholds. So if they define the thresholds and the, I don't know if it's possible, so.
Would it be possible for us to research that question because it seems more broader than the, the item in front of us? Like, could we just respond with a staff response rather than adding it to the issues matrix?
I don't think it's an issues matrix thing. I think it's for future.
Right.
Yeah.
Recommendation in the report forward.
Got it.
So when we bring forward the design standards, we can have some additional discussion on that, but also forward that comment to the team that's working on the design standard updates and see how if, we'll, we'll figure that as a part of the conversation.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So definitely close, please.
Commissioners closed item number seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. Okay. 13 is a new response that we've added. Oops, I'm so sorry. Here we go. The request for some additional explanation of why the Saturday market reference was struck. Staff team dug into this one to try to figure out what the clarification was. As we've mentioned here in the response is, the Saturday market is a specific entity and the zoning code, we try not to reference Starbucks or Shake Stack or anything. So we're just trying to take out the reference to the entity, but it doesn't change the underlying open space area plan dedication and future uses of that space. It just allows other tenants to use that space. So we've outlined in here, another option, instead of just striking through, was if the Planning Commission desires, we could just instead replace the Saturday market reference to just a generic farmer's market reference. And that's our staff response on that one.
So I am enthusiastically in favor of that second option. I really appreciate it. I think the big thing that I wanted to capture here is that space is such a public benefit. It's not being realized right now, but when we look at the location and the goals for that area and the light rail coming in and all the development around it, and even the recent questions about which grocery stores might be closing in our area, it just, it becomes more and more relevant. So I just didn't want to make a path where it was easier to say that was part of an older Redmond. I think it's really important for Redmond going forward. So I love the second option where we take out the specific reference to the organization and put in farmer's markets or similar, our fairs would work. Like, anything that's in that sort of markety vibe, I think would work very well. Yeah. Commissioner Parana.
Yeah. Because if we, if we, it's a place to revitalize, it's an opportunity to revitalize. And also, it shouldn't be just a farmer's market, right? I mean, what happens during Christmas? Maybe we can have a Christmas fair or something like that. So it should be an all-season space that we can set up fairs and markets.
Right.
So.
Commissioner Coleman.
I'm equally as passionate about this, I think, as you're aware. Yeah. And, and, you know, from polling, so to speak, some, some local friends and neighbors, they were really concerned about this, this particular spot. There's very, there's a lot of people have been, not just in Redmond for some time, but others as well, who think that there should be a farmer's market back where it was. There is stuff happening around the holidays there. I do think they sell Christmas trees or holiday trees, right, at that spot? So I, I, I would wholeheartedly support, like, let's use it for other things when it's, you know, wet and rainy here and we don't have.
And I do want to clarify, it's not our land and I do recognize it. There is an owner that is not the city. However, I don't want to change the zoning away from the way the zoning is now.
And to clarify, we're not proposing any changes to any open space agreements, zoning, the use allowed. We're just trying to remove the entity name so that it's more clear that any vendor could use that space for that use.
I just want to bring out one other piece that was talked about off microphone before the meeting, just the idea that there was a development agreement with this land in the first place. There is market infrastructure. the first place. There is market infrastructure there currently. All of that would have to be renegotiated with the city council, to my understanding, if there was going to be any switch. So there's still an additional layer of protection here. I just didn't want to see this utterly removed from the code because I do think it, again, it's sort of a cherished spot in the city.
And I just, I don't know if it's possible even put this into any of the code. But part of this is like tradition, there's parts of this that Redmond is changing to a city. And this is a core anchor to both. It's rural nature and the historical reasons of why it came here in the first place. And so I don't know if there's something we could put in there that's related to that, but I think we miss it because I think a lot of these, a lot of the things we review are very cold because it's about, I don't mean in a bad way, but, you know, it's just the nature of these things, very rational. But there's something emotive in this, but you can hear it in the conversation. And I don't know if anybody else has any kind of thoughts on that.
I totally agree, but maybe not in the zoning code.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Somewhere.
I completely agree.
Yeah. And we can pass that along to our Parks Department and others. As the next time we talk about those types of plans being updated, maybe we talk about the historical uses of these types of sites. The other thing that we have moving forward next year is we're adopting a code, brand new, for a food truck court, but we're also making that a pop-up retail court. Or, you know, so farmer's market, pop-up retail, all of those could be under the same regulations. So we could potentially have some further edits to this section that just references, just, there's an acknowledgement that this space could also be used for those others if it meets the requirements. So we can continue the conversation around farmer's markets and some of the other pop-ups and temporary uses as we move forward under our complete community and our additional edits that we're trying to do to respond to some Redmond 2050 specific community requests.
Yeah, that's very thoughtful. I like that. But with the minor edit from Redmond Saturday Market, all caps, organization to just farmer's market and similar or something like that, then I'd be ready to close.
Same.
Commissioner Parnell?
I just want to say, the food truck court sounds wonderful. I'm just waiting for it.
It's a catnip for Planning Commission. Okay. Onto item 14.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So Commissioner Parnell had indicated that item 14 could be closed. 15 is closed. 16, Commissioner Parnell, this is what happens when open space. I believe when we talked about this before, we said that typically if the regulation limits, but we just wanted to confirm if the open space, just in case it was doing something different, there is no difference. It's the same thing. If, you cannot meet the open space requirements for that full use of that site, you'll just back down to the use that it can meet the requirements.
You can close that, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
I kind of missed that, so sorry about that.
Okay. Item 17 is closed. 18 is closed. 19 is closed. 20. This one, I did want to mention that we have not provided an edit to that section. You had mentioned that it was confusing. We have another set of code updates coming for this chapter. Because of the turnaround time and the resources for this, staff just didn't have an opportunity to rethink that process. And it's like a three-month delay for the next section to code. If it's okay, that we would just address that confusion in the 2025 code package. Okay, thank you. I appreciate your leniency on that. We're trying to balance a lot right now. We appreciate it. Okay. Okay. And also, Commissioner Van Nyman, water use efficiency. Are we comfortable with closing item 21? I'm not convinced that was mine, but. Oh, did we get the wrong name attached to that one? Does anybody recognize that?
I'm actually, I don't think this was part of this document. I believe this was when we were discussing the water plant.
Oh, do you think it may be?
I believe this was.
Is in the wrong one?
I think so.
Okay.
We might want to just remove this item because it's really a different issue.
Well, it's under landscaping. It's in the landscaping code. So it probably just came up as a part of just.
It was part of this.
It was part.
Okay.
Pardon me. I take it back.
Well, maybe I'm just not remembering right, but it looks good. Does anybody want to keep it open for any reason? Anybody else? Okay.
No. Thank you, though.
Thank you. Okay, item number 22 is closed. 23 is closed. Commissioner Parnell agreed to go ahead and close the edit to affordable commercial. Emergency management, I think we talked about this one. I don't know if I just missed if it was closed or not.
That was a clarification in the meeting and we're, we can definitely close. So I'm not sure that ever actually should have made it to the matrix. I just wanted to make sure that council member Stuart's suggestion about having places to stage supplies had made it in. And I wasn't sure if what I was reading was the vocab word related to that. It turned out it wasn't. It was in a different spot, and you clarified that at the time. So we can close.
Thank you. Yeah, they're just separate line items in the incentive package. So they're both there. The street maps, I just wanted to also reiterate that we, we've updated one of the street maps to the new color, blind friendly version. The other two will get updated when it goes to council. The data won't change, but it will just be reformatted to the same look and feel.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. 27 is closed. In the foreword, we did, Commissioner Coleman had emailed us. Just want to confirm if you're comfortable with closing it?
I'm not at the moment.
So I actually wanted to chime in on this one too, because I understand, and I actually appreciate this comment because sometimes there are things we do weigh in on and some things that we don't weigh in on. So while it might make sense to actually close this because I think the concern isn't really ours to manage, I do want to actually very strongly agree with Commissioner Coleman's read on it, that it, I don't know if that's, apparently it's not a complete version yet.
No, yeah, and.
But both the, I would just say, Redmond tends to have a standard of formatting and presentation for formal documentation. And so to start the entire comp plan with something that read so informally without more context, I really don't understand why it's there.
Yeah.
So I would just really strongly encourage the city to revisit that particular foreword and just maybe look at it with fresh eyes.
Yes. And yeah, and I'm going to be meeting with our DI manager in the next couple of weeks to rewrite it, to bring it more. And as I, we were talking earlier today too, it's like, it's the right kind of shoe, but it's the wrong size and we might need new laces, right? So it doesn't feel like it's a forward to this document. And so we have a little bit of massaging to do to rewrite it so that it works specifically for this document. And so we'll come back. And I did appreciate the email from Commissioner Coleman that had some suggestions. If any of you have some other suggestions that you would like to see as we take another stab at rewriting the foreword, we're happy to take that. It will be finalized by city leadership with the mayor's letter. So it's something that will happen a little bit later, towards the end of when council's done with their review. Just so, both of those pieces are a reflection of the final product, if that makes sense. So those will be like the very, very last things that are completed before we actually publish the full document.
I have a couple of comments because I brought it up.
Commissioner Coleman?
One is a general one, which is like, I've been on the commission for a short period of time, people have been on here for longer, and there's lots of people who have worked hard on this omnibus plan. If you wrote a book and then someone released it and you didn't see the foreword and it was your book, you'd be really concerned because you worked really hard on it, something, and you feel like the positioning of this is actually really strange. So I just want to make that comment. That would be an odd thing to do. The second thing is, I made some recommendations and some comments. It's not in the issues matrix, which I appreciate because it's not actually in our remit. But I appreciate the, I want to just say thank you. I appreciate being able to give input on something that isn't actually in our remit. But I do think affects the nature of, for the commissioners, how they feel about how the omnibus is being, or the comprehensive plan is being teed up. This is the last thing that we want to get finished and over the line. And I just think it's like a bit of a, there's just things that could be improved dramatically in the way it's framed.
Yeah. And once we do get it finalized, I'll make sure that the planning commission gets a copy of the final foreword and the final letter from the mayor so that you can see how it is finalized.
Yeah.
Would you ever mind adding my name to this line item? I'm sorry. Would you ever mind adding my name to this line item in the matrix?
I did it already. You're there.
Lovely. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we asking to close this, right?
I think it's up to you. I'm willing to, but with the understanding that it is continuing to be edited and technically is not in our purview. But I think it was a really important point to bring up.
If we didn't close it, what's the implication? I mean, it seems there's no implication.
Then it stays open, but it's not, like, we wouldn't necessarily be able to resolve this, I think.
Yeah, we can't resolve it whatever we, whatever we went to here, right?
Right. Typically, we like to get every issue on the issues matrix closed, one way or the other, before the planning commission makes a recommendation. But that doesn't necessarily mean that we're always going to be able to do that. Because, so it doesn't matter if it stays open. But from the standpoint of an issues matrix, what we try to do is, we try to focus the issues matrix on the documents that are being edited. And if we can keep it to where anything that is related to this document and the edit specific, then we don't need to keep it open or closed, right? Because it's not an edit.
Can I, maybe I'll chime in with an alternate way of saying that, is just that there are times where we have things in the issues matrix that are strongly held beliefs by a commissioner, but they don't end up influencing the final direction of the document.
There you go.
And so it was an important thing to bring up. It served its purpose by being examined in the issues matrix. But then we sort of have a, and yet sometimes it doesn't end up changing things at the end. We can close it, but it, there's still a record of the concern in the packet that goes to city council. And if, if it's not addressed fully, anyone here is welcome to write an addendum or call this out as something that should be an addendum when we send the packet forward. So there, there are different levels of, like, yeah, of like, well, there's also different levels of, like, how strongly do you feel this needs to be pushed, even if it's not the sort, like, this wouldn't be worth holding the omnibus package up for because it's not really under our purview. However, I do agree that this document is something that we all very much care about at representing Redmond well.
A couple of comments here. One is, if we don't have any input into it, I don't know why it's attached to the actual, the actual thing in the first place. And we took, we got, the reason I just, I happened to read it, I'm like, let's read the foreword. Like, oh, hang on a second. I think there's other, all the things that I put in. So that's the thing that's like, this is like a very gray area for me. It's about, one of the things I feel very passionate about, because I do think there's a better way of actually framing some of these things, given the context and the fact that I agree with a lot of what's in there. It's not that. The other piece is, if it's going to go to council, you know, I've made some recommendations in here and put some, if, if what I wrote in email is included in that, then I'm happy to close it and include that as an addendum or whatever the right kind of way of doing that is when it goes to council, if that's okay. Does that work?
That works for me. Yeah. And thank you for restating that, Chair Weston. That was a much better way of saying. Yes. But yeah, we will, we'll take anything. If Commissioner Coleman or anybody else has recommendations in, like I said, I'm going to be meeting specifically to rewrite the foreword into the next draft version here in a couple of weeks. So anything that anybody has a specific request that they would like to see mentioned in the foreword, please feel free to email it to me and we'll just take it to that meeting.
Becky, thank you. And Ian, too. Let's close this. I'm good with closing it unless Parnell has something else.
Commissioner Parnell, is this related to this item?
I was just wondering, I haven't read the foreword to the degree you have, but if it is something that everybody is agreeing on in terms of needing form, maybe it's one of the recommendations we put in our cover letter as the recommendation, one of the small things that we put in, in the approval letter. If it's something everybody feels strongly about, I, so.
I sort of, at this point, if it is still an active item that is being worked on by the planning department, I don't feel personally a need to call it out to that degree.
Yeah, I'd agree with that. If we can do what we were just talking about, I think that's fine. And then, you know, when, when there's a revised version, it would just be good to be able to see that. I'd appreciate that. So thank you.
That's great.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Great, thank you. 29 is closed. And then item number 30 is not closed. I'm going to hand this over to Ian Lefkord.
Oh, this item had several kind of sub-bullet components to a general question about the new affordability requirements for our neighborhood residential zone, which has already been previously reviewed in the residential regulations packet that the PC provided their approval on, on May 8. As we recall, in that package, the actual development standards were all there, but the affordability analysis was ongoing. That has been reflected here in this item as well. And then also, we had some pieces about just kind of the varying methodologies of that affordability requirement and about kind of ownership in general. So we tried to provide a line-by-line response. What are your reactions, Commissioner Parnell?
So I, I appreciate the beginnings of this, but I just felt that the commission should be reviewing this with a little more, this is the first time we are seeing this. So I thought we should pause and think it through. And I would like the commissioners to kind of participate in this because for me, I feel that, like fundamentally, a housing unit and a dwelling unit, where is the legal distinction? Because what I'm understanding is a single-family unit, a single-family site which does not subdivide is one housing unit, but if it has an ADU, it's still one housing unit, but two dwelling units? Is that right? Or, because your answers are relevant to housing units. So I'm just trying to clarify that at the top level.
Right. And so as a reminder, for neighborhood residential, we are allowing up to six dwelling units by right per lot, which is a new direction for intensity on land use that is due to state legislation. With accessory dwelling units, or ADUs in particular, that one is often kind of an odd duck because there are often other state legislative requirements that make it so these kind of exceptions are carved out. And it's, it is interesting because, well, if we have an ADU, a detached ADU, that's a thousand square feet, like fundamentally, what is the difference between that and like a 1,000-square-foot cottage? There are some quirks there. Staff tried to navigate around state legislature, but that is the fundamental underlying reason.
Fundamentally, when you say new development, it is when multiple owners would come into it, or you have multiple units which are not ADUs being built. Is that, I'm sorry, I'm just a little confused. Sorry about that. But, because for me, what I'm trying to get at is where is that line between, let's say I have a lot of 10,000 square feet and I build another home, like I have a single-family home right now, and I, I build, I don't subdivide my lot, but I build another dwelling unit, not an ADU, and maybe it's like 1,500 square feet or 2,000 square feet home. And, or maybe I layer on one on top of, as a triplex or whatever variation of a theme. Am I required, because I have now two units, now I have a percentage of something that I need to do? What if I had like four of those units, but I, I'm a single family, I'm not doing this as a commercial redevelopment. as a commercial redevelopment, but I'm just expanding the buildable space in my, on my site? Where would I fit in in this? Would I have to provide one unit? Or does it zero down because it's one out of two units, that's 50% that's not needed?
Well, that is a bunch of information and some great questions. And I'm going to start backwards with that last piece because I feel like that's one of the most important mechanisms that we talk about. Currently, our affordability requirements in 2120 have a rounding provision. So we say 10% of development, 10% must be affordable, but it's not always divisible by 10. So what happens? If it's 0.5, it rounds up and you have to put an onsite affordable housing unit. If the 10% ends up in something less than 0.5, you round down and you get zero affordable housing units. Now, that's just for the decimal, right? So if you're talking about something that's got hundreds of dwelling units, you get all of the whole 10%, but then whatever the remainder is, rounds up or down. The new mechanism for neighborhood residential is that we are always going to proportion the requirement into some affordability requirement. There's no rounding anymore. Instead, if it's less than a whole affordable housing unit, it triggers into this payment in lieu system. So that's the first piece. So to your direct question, Commissioner Aparna, if you had like four dwelling units, you would not be required to have an onsite affordable unit. It would instead go to this payment in lieu system. And the amount of the payment is predicated on two pieces. One, the type of structure. So in the issues matrix, you can see that we have detached, attached, vertically aligned, and then attached horizontally. Why do we have these three different types? The main reason there is that they have different building costs generally associated with different building code requirements. So you have one lever is typology, and then the other input is the square footage of the structure. So I think this speaks nicely to your discussion about, you know, if you're a single-family homeowner with one dwelling unit and you add a second structure, the type and the size of it will determine the affordability payment in lieu that would be required. Now, we are just as a catch-all saying, you absolutely can fulfill this by providing an onsite affordable unit, right? Like, we're not taking that away, but we do expect that most times developer, developments would tend to choose the payment in lieu because in most situations, it would be less costly. That was also a lot of information.
Just to clarify that, payment in lieu then goes to a fund which supports what?
Very explicitly goes to affordable housing outcomes.
Great. Thank you.
Great question. Thank you.
Outcomes, are those people's wallets? So are you guys paying people's rent that need affordable housing? Or is this going to thought projects on affordable housing? Or a gradient in between?
Typically, the money goes directly into our housing trust fund, which is used for capital projects. So it goes towards the construction or rehabilitation of affordable housing.
Okay, that's good. And then, once that's built or available, do some of those funds then flow to the people to help with payments for housing? Or is it just the cost is set such that they can afford it?
The latter.
Okay. And then, I saw the 80% and the 12 and a half percent. I'm just curious, what was the thinking getting to those two numbers? Why 80% versus 60 or 100 AMI? And second, why 12 and a half percent when so many times you see 20, 25 in different places?
Absolutely. So the first big, bold, underlying statement is, based on robust financial feasibility modeling to identify solutions that would actually work. So that's, that's it. No matter what sentence I say, that is the parenthetical after it. 12.5% dovetails nicely with the amount that we were working with because we allow six dwelling units by right in neighborhood residential with our proposed regulations. But we allow up to eight if you provide one affordable housing unit onsite. 12.5% is one-eighth. Now, we didn't actually plan it that way. We always knew we wanted to have some onsite affordability, but it just worked out with the math perfectly. In regards to why 80 versus 60 or 50, typically what we see is that, well, let's back up a higher level. Our previous housing policies and plans have identified the greatest need is for households earning around 50% AMI or less. So we've always tried to get to that point. The challenge is that the delta, or the difference between kind of impacts of reducing costs is more for ownership units than it is for rental units. So by that, it's generally easier to get 50% rental units than it is 50% ownership units, especially here in Redmond, where an average market rate ownership unit is so much bigger than what you would be bringing it down to as part of a cost-controlled unit. So 80% did pencil out and 80% is still, it's, I mean, that's still a terrific deal for the household that gets in there. But that's why we chose to go with 80% versus 60 or 50.
Yeah, I would commend you guys for this. This is different than what I've seen other places, and I've looked a few places. And I think it's good work and I think it's really rigorous thinking you guys put into this, so good job.
Thank you.
Commissioner Aparna? There are a whole host of questions, and I'm a little muddled, so I apologize. But when we talk about the payments in lieu formula, right, like, okay, what should be based on the difference between the cost of construction for a prototype affordable housing unit on the subject property, including land costs and development fees, and the revenue generated by an affordable housing unit? Does that mean that, let's say, a homeowner like me, let's say I just built a unit which wasn't affordable, right? Like, it wasn't, wasn't earmarked for being an affordable unit, but I was willing to pay the fee, right? And I say, okay, the market rate, I'm going to get $2,200, for instance, as rent. So is that mean that that delta, that 80%, which I would have lost if I had given it at, at 80% of the market rate? That plus the changes in construction costs? Is that how it would, and for how long would this fee in lieu be, right? Is it a, is it 12 years, like the art stuff? Or is it eight years? I don't see a term here, and I'm not understanding the formula. That's my question.
Absolutely. So there are a few pieces there. And the first one is, your understanding that was just explained, that is, that is the essence of it.
Okay.
One small tweak there is it wouldn't be you, the homeowner, assessing the value. We would basically be comparing it to like a median component of the typology through a market analysis.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be your specific property. And then the second piece is that the fee is one-time, so you just pay it upfront, good to go. And then the third piece is, for affordable onsite units, those would be similarly timed as with all of our others, which is to say, for the life of the project. So that affordable housing unit would stay affordable until the project was like redeveloped.
So then, if I'm paying the one-time fee and I'm looking at the difference between the rates, for me as a homeowner, why would I build an affordable unit if I'm going to, this is in perpetuity, and if I'm doing a one-time thing, my rate of return, there's no, the numbers are not the same then, right?
If we were doing it just on one year of spreadsheet, it would not. But our analysis is taking into consideration that over time, IRR perspective. So it's trying to capture that and reflect that.
Would it be possible to get more information on the analysis that you're talking about? Just to see what that underlying math looks like or what the underlying analysis looks like? Like, what's informed this? Because like, when we did the inclusionary zoning piece, I think a lot of us got a sense of it after we had the, the analysis, the financial analysis and the penciling of several of these things. So for me, I'm not seeing how that, where that number is coming from. I don't see a formula of anything here. So I'm not able to make out if it's actually an equivalence that we are doing, or is one option better than another? The other? If there's some way to break that tie in terms of information, I would really appreciate it. That's what I mean.
So one thing I would just say here is, you're asking questions I think are excellent from an individual, like, landowner perspective. But maybe when you zoom out to the city as a whole, then the formula and the fee in lieu, or the payment in lieu makes more sense. Because I, I think if I'm understanding your correction, your question correctly, there's just a concern that, like, over time, it's not going to result in affordable housing?
Right. No, because this is specifically the neighborhood residential zone. So we're actually talking about conversion of single-family homes to, so the multifamily zones are a bit different. And the, so what I'm trying to get at is, if we are targeting homeowners or folks with just lots, larger lots, then I, the development, when you have a big, a one-acre lot and then you subdivide, those numbers are commercially kind of added up because you know you're subdividing an eight and so on. But when you're talking about a smaller unit, like, my vision, and I could be completely wrong here and completely think of something else, but my vision, when we did this whole thing, was that the whole city over time, and what were the projections, around 25% of the single-family homes would transform into something denser. So that, those were the assumptions which were used in the water plan and everywhere else. So with that, that's the 25% I'm looking at here.
I think what, just Commissioner Coleman in a second, but I think the thing to keep in mind is there are two separate goals here, and one is the density, but then one's the affordable housing piece. And so using this formula, I think we still get traction on the affordable housing, even though each individual lot probably can't support. Like, when we get into this formula, I think there are very few lots in the sort of middle housing redevelopment that you're talking about, where people would be putting on five or more homes on one house that's like currently on a cul-de-sac, for example.
So when we talk about even one more unit, we are effectively, like, if I just, I have a flat roof, I can technically shore up my foundations and build one more floor on top because I don't hit the height restrictions just yet, right? So let's say I did that hypothetically, without adding anything more, no ADUs, nothing else, okay? So the open space, all the setbacks, everything stays as is, I'm keeping to the height restrictions. At that point, what I'm understanding is that that one unit will be subject to a payment fee in lieu. And that's fine. I'm, I'm okay with that. But I need to understand what that payment means, like, how is it being calculated? And I think it's a very fair question if people want to actually build one more house or one more house on the site, in their lot. It's, they would want to know what they're getting into. As a single-family homeowner, I'm not, I see that the commercial ones and the multifamily homes are a little bit better, clearer.
So for the sake of getting to some sort of conclusion, at least for this evening, what we can say is, we'll leave this open. We'll have Ian bring back some additional information on the math, so we can share a little bit of that analysis with you. And then, the intention here is to acknowledge and make it a little bit easier for incremental growth to happen, but also recognizing that, that individual property owner's not going to be building an affordable unit when they build a unit, most of the time, right? Yeah. But that, as Ian mentioned earlier, that, that if you build, if you do, then you don't just get one additional unit, right? You get another market unit on top of it, right? So there is some trade-offs in that if you do actually do an affordable housing unit. So, but for the sake of this evening, if we could just say, let's leave this open, we'll, we'll come back with some additional information and hope to, we can get to a point where we're comfortable next week?
Commissioner Coleman, did you want to join in on this one?
Just very quickly, like, the only takeaway I have here is, it feels like if you can afford it, you can pay the tax and not have to build an affordable unit. So you pay the tax, so it goes somewhere else. It feels like a carbon offset. So like, not in my backyard, but somebody else can build it somewhere else. Is that not right?
No, I don't think so. So what I'm, I wouldn't characterize it that way at all. So what I'm hearing is that if you're adding density to your own lot, there is an assumption that in our, like, the back of our mind, we are recognizing that if you hit a certain number of units, one of them should be affordable, just from a ratio perspective. But if you even develop like a few units and you don't hit that point where it tips over to actually building a unit, then you are in contributing into this fund that will support affordable housing somewhere else in Redmond that's more suited for it instead of on your one small lot. Commissioner Van Nyman?
You're already contributing to increased affordability because you're increasing supply, so why are we punishing people for building more?
We're not punishing people. We're allowing people to have more intensity and we're allowing people to have even more intensity on the intensity if they provide an affordable housing unit onsite.
People don't necessarily, for this particular discussion of single-family homeowners, like, quarter-acre lot, right? They don't want to start a business and build five units, they just want an ADU, right? They just want, for their own purposes, their son and daughter-in-law to move in. And it works for them. This is not a business model. They, and, and so, I, it just finally occurred to me, what we're really doing here, and it seems like you already have the right to build it, right? State law says I have the right to build it, right?
State law gives you the ability to build up to less than eight units. It varies based on the size of the city and other things, but the state doesn't guarantee up to eight.
But, but the state says I can build an ADU.
Correct.
And so now we're saying, and we want people to build ADUs. We really want people to build ADUs. This is a fabulous way to add more housing units, dwelling units, and, and therefore start to increase supply and stabilize costs. But now we're saying, yeah, but if you do that, and we, and we really want you to do that, and that's great, but now we, because it wasn't affordable, we're going to tax you on that effectively by making you pay into this fund. And what, you seem to have some understanding of that math that I didn't follow. What, what type of number would that be?
Well, I don't think it would be considered a tax to do it.
It's effectively a tax.
But there are many things that impact the cost of development that the city already does. Open space, if you want to go with that framework, could be considered a tax. Fire codes could be considered a tax. Ultimately, the city as a community sets values and determines things that they say we want as a community, inputs that into development standards, and then that's the result. The work of all of us, including the commission, is to make sure that the drafts that go forward are things that work for all members of our community as best as possible, acknowledging that that may not always be the case in certain economic conditions. The recommendations that are in front of the commission tonight, we're absolutely taking into consideration, these need to be financially feasible. And Commissioner Aparna, to your point, it is very explicit that the specific numbers are not in the code because the intent is that we would run this analysis annually and then publish it with our fee schedule, rather than putting it in the code, which would require amendments.
Commissioner Aparna?
So I completely agree with the principle of the thing. I'm just looking for some clarifications on what that might look like in the code. I, I completely think that it's not a tax, it is, it is our values which will cost money. It is a change in our fundamental assumptions, the way we were doing business before to now, it is a change. Because we have, we have to change so that we can have a more socio-economically diverse city. I, I completely get that. And I have no quibbles with the proposal. I am just not understanding the details. So for me, it's more like, if this is made, and if you say that it's going to be annual and the study is going to be an independent analysis, because you've got arch in there and all of that and the regulations, but there's a little less detail on how the fee in lieu is calculated. So a little more detail, or at least background information would be appreciated. It's, it's, it's about information and clarity as opposed to principle, for me.
Yes.
You got it.
So we'll stick with Becky's suggestion of, we'll just get a little bit more information about the background, like, mechanics of this for next week.
Yes.
Commissioner Gagne? Commissioner Gagne.
I just want to tell you how much I appreciate that you're pushing this issue because I have learned so much in the last 15 minutes. Really, I mean, I think I, how I'm understanding this whole thing is because you're pushing so hard on this. So I appreciate it very much. My sense is, I agree with you. I think it's an effective tax. And I think that if this is a goal to meet principles and we're saying that we want to support growth and development and higher density, that is effectively taxing homeowners.
Maybe let's, let's look at this more in detail next week when you have the math. I think that's a little bit.
It could be premature.
Of a leap, yeah.
Thankful that you're pushing this.
And maybe we can work up an example to show how that fee would be calculated. That might be helpful as well.
All right, so we will leave this one open.
We'll leave that one open. Item 31 and 32 have both been approved for Commissioner Parnell to be closed. And 33, Commissioner Parnell has indicated can be closed. So at this time, what I would like to ask if there's any new issues that you would like to add. And we can either try to address them and close them today or we'll just try to get everything closed next week.
So one that I would like to add is from our public, or I have a few, but we'll go round robin. So the first one was just the question of in the non-residential use table or the commercial permit application, adding more specificity so that applicants know that they are located in a CARA when not just the Shoreline Act provisions.
Let me show you, I'll bring that up and show you exactly how that's already been addressed.
Thank you.
So in your packet, you will see that Table 200 is not complete yet because we're going to complete it next year. So what I did for those items that are uses that are impacted by the CARA, I've added a note number two for those uses. And then we have now a new note that says, hey, if it's in the CARA, this use might be restricted or prohibited, and go see the CARA regulations. And so the rest of the zoning districts is they migrate to this table. If it is an area that is potentially or could be in the CARA, because some of these zoning districts are, then we would just add a note again two. And then the property owner would determine, are they in the CARA? Go see there. And so that's how we've addressed it too. But there's an acknowledgement, these uses have to be listed in the table somewhere. But they're not going to be allowed in the CARA if they're prohibited under the CARA regulations or so.
So just a clarification on that. Do you feel that applicants can self-serve that information? Can they self-serve that information? Or do they have to engage with the planning department first?
No, and actually, we're completely updating a lot of our property viewer maps too. So a lot of the information is going to be much easier to obtain for moving forward. And Ordre Cadence is doing a massive amount of work now to get ready for that. But it should be much easier for people to identify if there's a potential conflict with it all just being now in this table with this note and a cross-reference. And that's part of the issue from before is there wasn't necessarily a flag for somebody to hit. They would actually have to identify it somewhere else. So staff has looked at a number of different ways that you could approach it, but without actually doing major revisions or major edits that would potentially be in conflict. We felt this was the best way to make sure that if you are in that zoning district that could potentially be in a CARA, you have a two for those uses that are prohibited or restricted in the CARA.
Okay, so what I'd love to do is if you could ever very briefly encapsulate that issue, open it today and close it today for the issues matrix. Because I'm comfortable with that answer. I just want it to be in the packet as a call-out because I know there's been so much discussion over the entire time that we've been working on this on making sure that the CARA is protected.
I'd be happy to.
Commissioner Parnell.
So I wanted to thank Dr. Morton, who comes in regularly and is the CARA champion. Because I think this is critical, the work that, and thank you for doing this, Becky, because I think that's serving the concern and it's a good thing. I believe we got a written comment from LWSD today. If you could please add that to the matrix.
Which part specifically?
There was one on, there was a particular wording, if I'm not mistaken.
So the issue on that was about expanding use of the road that goes to their bus station for, we actually have covered that as a planning commission. There was an open item on that. And then we closed it. So I would prefer not to reopen that unless you see additional new information for us to consider.
So, okay, because I thought it made sense, but maybe I missed it the last time. It's just, again, very fuzzy days, so I apologize.
It was a while ago.
Also, the permit five piece, which is, I think, here and not with the previous issue.
Yeah, and I can pull that up and we can walk through that.
Yeah, and I'd like to weigh in on that one too. So we received two public comments about people who were concerned that the vesting schedule for type five permits was going to cause basically undue hardship on developers, especially in Overlake. And I just, I couldn't, again, I thought this was even related to a different thing. I didn't realize it was the public hearing tonight. But if it is, I'd just love to know the city's stance on that.
Yeah, so we had, during that final testing phase, we knew that there was a few things in the Overlake code that we just wanted to do another round of just how it would roll out and what the impacts would be. And vesting was a question that came up just repeatedly. Just there was just some clarifications about the intent of that flexibility. And so our planning director, Helen, had asked for this specific edit because there has been some weird uses of development agreements in the past where a development had been approved and then they would just pick and choose which version of the code that they would vest to and does not want that to happen moving forward. They, and so development agreements typically vest to the code that's in play at the time of the development agreement approval. And so that's where this code would go into effect in January. And so she just wanted to add some clarification that please don't vest backwards with your development agreement. And then just plan ahead knowing that if you're trying to come in with a massive project that is a type five, that it may be you've passed your threshold because your development agreement approval process wouldn't get approved until like March or something like that potentially, just from the review cycle. So know in advance before you submit your combined application. But we can add this to the issues matrix for sure. I've already forwarded that, those comments to Director Helen. She is on vacation through the end of this week. When she gets back in on Monday, we'll have a chat and we'll add some comments to the issues matrix and we'll update it. Your packet does go out this Friday and she will not be back in time for that. But we will bring an update from her and potentially she may even be able to come in next Wednesday and talk to the changes in the vesting. But just as a clarification too, this is an additional flexibility on top of our base code. So there's just been, there's just been some concern that we may have gone a little too far initially. And the end results on those massive projects might not be what we had originally intended. And so this was an edit that she asked us to include in the omnibus package. But I would love to have her actually respond to this.
Just to clarify, who asked?
Our planning director, Director Helen. Okay, but I would love to have her actually respond to this. So I would love to actually add it to your issues matrix and get her direct response to it.
That'd be wonderful.
Thank you. Yeah, I think if we can allay the concerns, from what I'm understanding, it went too far and Little Coors corrected it to get it to an even keel. So if that is the case, then it would be nice to understand maybe the story so far for people who are forgetting things like fee right now. But, yeah.
Yeah, and there was a lot of confusion too because the current code allows you to combine permit types if you want to go faster. But the regulation says if you combine it, you have to go with the highest level of review. So if you combine a level two, a level three, and a level five, guess what? The entire thing gets reviewed as a five. And so the nuances of all of that just had to be like filtered through that last major testing phase of just trying to figure out, you know, does that, all of the code pieces that we understand work together? And are we getting the outcomes that we intend? And so, but I'm happy to add this into the issues matrix.
So just to summarize, I think the concern is, first of all, do developers have the clarity they need? Whether or not they agree with the city's position, do they have the clarity to understand what they're doing? And then the second would be, is any, like I guess, I feel like there was a, an assessment that there might be projects that are permanently imperiled because of this. But I, to me, I didn't see how that line would connect. So if the city feels that it does connect, I'm interested in the city's stance on that.
There are a couple of projects that are in the idea phase right now that are trying to figure out how this would impact if they could do that project or not. But they haven't submitted yet. And so the intention of 505 initially was everybody who's currently in the system, not people coming in at the very last minute. And that is one of the differences. So I mean, this code has been out there for a couple of years now. There, I recognize that people have a perfectly valid, if you can get under the current code and in the timelines, go for it under the current code. But at some point, the new code does have to take effect. And so that's part of the transition area. It was intended for projects that were in the system already and that were getting close to completion, but they weren't necessarily going to be fully completed. Not projects that are trying to come in like a month or two or right before the new code's going to affect and try to fully vest to this year's projects when the actual review cycle and vesting provisions that are in play by the city council and our codes all have a different vesting provision, if that makes sense.
Extremely helpful. All right, so is this an additional comment on this one? Commissioner Parnell.
So just to clarify from my head, we have a tentative timeline when this code goes into effect. We go backwards from there and say, this is what the approval time, approximate approval time for a type five permit is going to be. And that's roughly where the vesting date will lie? Is that roughly, like somewhere in that kind of logic?
Yeah, and that's why we started talking to people who were even thinking about projects in Overlake like two years ago. Like making sure that they knew the code, knew when we were thinking of adopting it, could take a look at the draft code and make a decision on if they wanted to go through and phase the project and get the first phase into the existing code and do future phases or if they wanted to try to do everything under the current code. We've been having these conversations for several years now, trying to make sure that people plan ahead. But there's always new opportunities, opportunities that weren't aware of. New properties go up for sale. And so now we're getting to, as we near the adoption, people are trying to figure out, well, can I do this under the current code or can I not? And that's where it's just nuancing of the language can actually make some deals fall through. Yes, because the actual review cycle timeframe, they've actually, it's now too close to the adoption. You're not going to be, complete that review cycle before the adoption.
Thank you. I think that helps.
Great, thank you.
And also, just so you know, just to make it super clear to the community on the vesting issue, because we had so many questions come up over the last couple of months. On the table of changes where you can go in and see all of the code, we added the vesting information right at the very top. Okay, so that everybody who's going in and looking at the new code understands how it could impact their property.
All right, any last final issues to add in? Sounds good. All right, so we'll end this item for this week. Thank you. All right, so our next up is going to be staff and commissioner updates.
We are at an exciting time in our schedule because this coming Wednesday, not two Wednesdays from now, but next Wednesday, we have a special planning commission meeting. So please, number one, if you have any input that you want to see into the next packet, please get that to us as soon as you can. We're going to try and publish it as always so it goes out on the weekend, which means we have a very tight turnaround. Second, we need to have Quorum as we're getting this kind of final push. So please let us know if any last-minute scheduling issues come up. And as a reminder, we are currently scheduled to have no planning commission meetings in August. If we need more time, we can as well. But just that's how it lies right now. So we'll figure out how we come when we get a temperature check at the end of our next special meeting on the 31st.
And just to clarify that comment, I think what we heard tonight is we will have to have some sort of small, possibly remote, meeting in August or else we won't be able to finalize the report for the legislative, sorry, the amendments.
We have drafted a planning commission report for you. So as a part of your packet, for next meeting, we'll have everything synced up for you and as many answers as possible. If you feel comfortable at that point in time that we've closed all the issues matrix and you want to go ahead and make the recommendation, you'll have the draft report in front of you.
I see. Okay, thank you.
If you don't, we can do a meeting in August.
Okay, so don't clear your Wednesdays just yet because there's a slim chance we might need to come back and take care of that one item so that it can go to city council on September 13th.
And the comprehensive plan final review, that big issue matrix item we just went through, that is scheduled for report approval on September 11th, which would be the first September one, which means there is some flexibility there depending on how much discourse we want to have in the coming couple of meetings.
And our goal, I'm just going to chime in on that one too. So our goal is still to finish working through the omnibus package in its entirety by next week.